What are we gonna do at seven o'clock?
I mean, you're too late for it. That, I doubt it ended up being a.
Well, yeah, didn't get home from. Four minutes. Yeah, ten ten. That game went in over. Come on. Somebody kicked the field.
I tell you what, that was the best game I've ever been able to look down there. It's hard to sound like.
Anything in the atmosphere and shout over.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. I was gonna say this.
All right, for the wedge.
I have a little wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the temple with liberty, peace, and honor.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning. All the meeting to order. Motion to approve the agenda. Do you need anything else going around?
Nope, we're good.
I'll make a motion. The blue is bringing.
Second.
I'll second.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Prove the minutes, October second. They look to be correct as printed motion to approve. For a second.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Prove the claims.
Uh, the numbers I had were four for general were four, four, six, nine, four, two, point four, eight, four hundred and forty-six thousand, nine forty-two, forty-eight. During each I had four thousand, one hundred and eighteen fifty, four, one, one, eight, five, oh.
Hold a second, those numbers. Everything looks good. Right.
Last news.
Okay, general public concerns.
We didn't vote on that.
Oh, no, in favor.
Aye.
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 Both.
I'm gonna step on your toes today, but I just, you didn't remember.
I'm just trying to get caught.
I know.
Sorry, I'm just trying to sign his name in the right place.
Yeah. You get that.
Thank you. All right, now, general public. Okay, nobody here, nobody on the TV. Ben, you're up.
Morning.
Morning, morning.
Weather changed here. Good, a little warm.
Yeah, yeah, I got ready to leave and asked what the temperature was. Grab some sleeves on, yeah, thirty-six, I'm like, oof, it was cold. Follows upon us. Um, couple of things for the agenda today. The first is to approve an application to work in the counties right away with Midland Power. Uh, this is to switch an overhead electric line on County K at eighteen, twelve, County K. Uh, from overhead to underground, they're gonna bore underneath the highway, uh, to the acreage there. Insurance and everything's intact and plans are fine.
Motion to approve said, uh, application for Midland.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Gary.
The next item that I've got on the agenda is to approve voucher number seven to Dixon Construction for the Lone Tree Road Bridge Project for fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, this pays for all of the tile down the center of the road. Uh, the subdrain outlets and the dirt work.
So what do we have left then after this, just retainage or?
Uh, there is retainage plus about another six thousand. Uh, they gotta come in, they gotta do seeding and fertilization, and then they gotta put mulch down. And then we've got some silt pens that they've gotta put in.
Okay. Well, it's been a good looking project all the way through. I'll make the motion to approve the voucher number seven for fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you.
Got a little discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Both, Gary.
Are they gonna try to seed that before, sounds like the middle of the week, they get wet?
Yeah, I think, uh, their goal was to try and get it near about Thursday, so. Um. Your temperature, the ground temperatures and everything are still warm enough that we can get something to terminate. If not, we'll be in with our hydro seeder, throw and seed at it again in the spring. So, if it doesn't take. Uh, next item that I've got on the agenda is to approve voucher number three to Peterson Contractors, Inc. For the bridge replacement project that was done up by Buffalo Olsons. Uh, this is the final retainage for that project. We've been waiting for the DOT to finish their, uh, Fed aid audit on the project, which has taken them longer than it should. But they've finally given us the green light on that to go ahead and pay the retainage out.
Approximately, when was that completed?
Uh, the first week in June.
Oh.
So, uh, we got done with everything, first week in June, we had everything but retainage paid for before the end of the fiscal year. And we've waited July, August, and September for the DOT to complete their materials audit, their paperwork audit. It wasn't just the DOT because this is a, uh, we went back to federal aid projects as far as funding. The feds had to review the project too, so.
By a light up on.
Takes longer.
Been long enough that there's, everything is good and you're comfortable paying the retainage.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it takes two weeks to do the construction and three months for the paperwork, so it sounds about right.
Federal.
Well, it sounds like we're in good shape with that. I would make the motion that you can approve the pay voucher number two to Peterson Contractors, uh, for the six thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Ready, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Both, Gary.
Those are the, the three things that I had on the agenda. Uh, officially, we have a maintainer sitting down at Murphy right now. Um, the engine is shot on it, all the infreezes piqued into the engineer. Um, about three weeks ago, so we took the machine down, they've diagnosed it, uh, as, as a need of an engine replacement. Uh, we can buy a brand new engine with a two-year warranty for about fifty-four thousand. Otherwise, we can buy a reman engine, uh, which will have a one-year warranty and it's forty or almost forty-five thousand. So, my guess shot is go new.
Old machines.
This is a twenty-eleven machine. Um, it recently got switched over to a winter machine. But looking at like replacement schedule, I don't see us replacing this for probably another six years. So like the two maintainers that we just purchased here a month ago were scheduled to be the last two that we would have to buy for the next five to six years. So while fifty thousand for an engine sounds bad, if you break it up over the next five, six years, it's not too bad.
They're buying a new machine, so it's pretty recent.
New, knowing that's about four fifty.
Yeah, we know what that's.
So what, if you do the new, are you gonna be able, do you run that enough in the summertime to? We worry that it's, everything good on it?
Because of all the additional projects that we've been doing with maintainers lately, reclaiming ditch, building road, we'd get enough hours on it to justify it.
So when you say winter machines, it's your secondary fleet, so to speak, but you don't put on just in the winter.
Right.
Like Bruce said, you not.
In the past, those machines were used just in the winter time, but like I said, with all of the additional things that we do with those machines now, they get run more often.
Well, this is a winner, is a winner machine, it's, you know, kinda went to that stage of its life. Given the motor, a lot's gonna take to get it, get it.
They have them in stock, uh, as far as timeframe for how long it takes.
They got a motor, but they don't have the machines.
Yeah.
Well, just thinking of winter, I hate, we all hate to think of it, but would be available for use.
Yes, yeah.
Well.
And this is a Digger, right, you said?
This is John Dier, yeah, that's at Murphy right now.
Well, some of it doesn't buy the drug to go, but you're gonna, obviously you have it because you need it, hopefully not, but yeah, for winter time use.
Right.
You're gonna have to get it up and running.
Yeah, and that's an oil dray machine, right?
Yes.
Okay.
For another ten thousand, you might as well get the newer engine.
Well, that's, that's where I was leaning Sandy was spend the extra ten thousand, get the additional year warranty on it and know that it's a brand new engine and not a.
Right, remake.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I'd go with the motion to take the fifty-four new versus the reman.
I'll second that.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, you're right, it's not.
Um.
Does it need to be?
It doesn't need to be, I don't think.
I think, thank you for the heads up.
I just wanted to run it by you guys.
Okay.
Well, then, when, when we get the bill, then we already know what the fifty-four thousand.
They won't know what it's about.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben, that makes sense.
All right. Uh, beyond that, uh, Lone Tree Road, we did open Friday afternoon, so that's open to traffic. We got it rocked. Uh, the contractor just plans on coming in and doing the seeding, fertilization, mulch under open traffic. But as of right now, all of the roads in Humboldt County are open, we're in the process of getting Burge Avenue closed for the half mile stretch between two, two thirtieth and two, no, two fortieth and two fiftieth. Uh, just a short stretch of ditch reclamation building the road of. Um, but we're in the process of getting that done, two tenth is open to traffic. Um, the guys did complete that. Uh, the tile project south of Thor by A and J Farms has been repaired and is, uh, covered back up, so.
The, did the letters go off the landowners yet?
Uh, the ones telling them that we were gonna fix it did, yeah, and I've talked to Nick just by text messages. Um, so he was aware that we're fixing it, um, and then beyond that, that'll. I'm waiting for pictures from the foreman that was on the job, but he said, I mean, it's a matter of time before those.
Yeah, the rest of it goes.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, beyond that, we're throwing grass seed at everything we disturbed and I got more grass seed ordered on the way.
Mm-hmm. Guys will be out mowing back slopes before long.
Before long, we will be, right now, we're trying to get all of our roads bladed and up to snuff, and as the crop continues coming out, we'll be out there mowing back slopes. Okay, that's all I have.
Good.
Anything is for signature, when you got time, Ben?
Okay, Gary Jensen, you're up.
All right. We got the handout. We were putting, you guys were asking last week, you know, what our intentions were, you know, just the summary of what we're proposing. There really just four things to get started. Be replace the safety cable, better replace the gates, make them operational, um, and then maintain the gates. Work it towards getting her, getting the channel back and then install flash horse, existing flashlight. Excuse me, the, uh, the ones that we've already still got. Uh, now, this isn't our only, this is not really it, this is where we might start. This could all be with local money, not be with any money, you know, community guys. Down the road, we would love to see Overmeyer, which are third operated gates. Um, we're talking about fish ladder, we've got many, many things in the works. Um, we're working on the cell part of it, we're working on, uh, the, uh, fish ladder. We've had people approach us about serving, we've also got the hatchery pond, mail race, you know, so this, there are a lot of things need to be addressed. But this is our initial start. This is what we'd like to see, start getting back up to snuff and looking what it was. So, that's really what we're shooting for.
So your plan is, if you can get those gates operational on the, be the east side?
Yes.
We can get a terrain and get some water flowing?
Yep.
And hopefully, see if it's gonna cut any channel.
Yep.
I mean, that one thing kind of leads to the next, right?
Yeah, we need to start. That's the thing that's needs repair, just that one thing.
Have to be able to operate those on a, more than a, once every however many years, so.
You know, we've talked, we, we honestly think we can do it ourselves with the equivalent we have, with the manpower we have. But we've not been able to see it. We need to get a good look at it, and we need to move some dirt, we need to get them. I guess, you know, we're initially after courses management or control of maintenance on the dam. Um, but we have to be part of that, we can't, you know, that's where we're asking, you know, can that part of it? Um, the gate itself, you know, it's, it's broke. We, and we think we can fix it, but we've also worked with Haxey Group, Brennan's, we've talked with them again, I mean, they, they do repairs too, but something beyond our, our realm. You know, and we understand we have to work with the D N R, um, and or for whoever's, you know, needs to be, cause we want this back working. But, you know, for the most part, it's a pretty simple deal. I mean, broke, you know, that's.
Have you gotten this, Gary, to the, um, conservation board yet?
Say it again, please.
Did you get this, all that you've just put out to the conservation board yet?
We have not, we intend to at their next meeting, present it to them at the next meeting.
Well, this was supposed to be presented to both everybody and then, um, it would be, get put on the agenda for an action item as a joint meeting. So really, it should have been put to both everybody.
Well, we will, it's, I mean, it's gonna be available to the public, this is just a statement we're making, but they don't have a meeting yet.
I, I think there probably, probably needs to be a little more detailed than this. I mean, I can see this is kinda just like an overview.
This is an overview, but it is because we have not, we don't have access to.
Right, right.
We don't know the, it's gonna take some, some exploratory work to find out this, what's there. And we don't, we don't know if it's, you've got your gates and then you got the rares. We don't know why bottom one's not working, is it just not hooked? Or is something bad or broken? We don't know that. You know, so, you know, without access, without looking at it, yeah, I mean, we can guess all day long. But as simple as what they are, what we can see, we're, we're confident we can execute it. So, and we would do that with, with our own funds. And we're not asking the county for anything other than being able to do it.
Oh.
Oh, it's nice to have at least, uh, something written down.
Well, and yeah.
But, you know, from the county side and Sandy mentioned, obviously, you know, the conservation board has management of the dam. And this is something that, you know, needs to be fought for the discussion amongst and with them. And I'm not, you know, and we need to see two definitive, you know, legal proof that anyone past people associated with the county, i.e. the conservation board, can do anything with the dam.
Yeah.
We don't have anything in writing to the, any effect of anything yet.
And that would, that would all be true, right?
Yeah, and it has to be.
It's, it's no different than when I worked, hey, guys.
Right.
It has a security insurance, you know, like John said last week, you know, we'll have waivers and, you know, we can do or will do whatever is necessary. But it's kinda the same thing, you know, well, here's what we're trying to do, what do you guys want from us?
Well, at least, you see the beginning faces, I mean, you did write something down, but yeah, we have.
What's more, we got from the county, I mean, we haven't had anything from them for how many years, so, but it's a step in the right direction.
Say we've got quite a bit.
What have we got from the conservation board showing anything that they've done? I'll sit and wait.
Well, I'm not gonna get in an argument.
I'm not gonna argue either, I'm just asking, that you, they did what you guys asked. Now we're gonna take, they're gonna take it over to the conservation board and we're asking for more?
Well, again, Bruce, this is, again, it was already discussed last week that this had to be a joint meeting type discussion. And we need to see where we're gonna be moving forward. I'm, John also said that the conservation board needs to get their own legal. So I think we need to let them get their process going too. And the group also needs to get it more detailed, not just an overview to everybody.
And again, we can't, we can't detail what we don't know. I mean, it's, you know, tell me what details you want, I'll give them to you.
Well, they get it.
Well, I don't know, we'd have to know so we could get it to the conservation board.
What are they gonna know about it right now? They haven't been out there looking at it.
Until.
I think we've done several studies, I think they have done several studies, don't, that's not a fair statement, Bruce. They have gotten and they have done several studies, so it isn't like nothing's been done.
We spent a lot of money.
We've been working on this since twenty nineteen, since I've got put on the board.
You're right.
We spent a lot of money, but we haven't even, we, we haven't even put the cables back that got torn down. I mean, that's the concern, I mean, I mean, you come, the number one thing that I've always heard is that it's a safety issue, but the cables were never replaced. And if the cables had been there, we might not have had that accident that was earlier this, this summer with the person getting hung up on there where, where Mr. Christiansen helped get him off of it. Because the cable was not there, so.
That's a safety issue.
That's, that's a safety issue that was never addressed. Um, the signage, thank you for the signage that we put up there, but there, but the, the signage came up when most of the year was already over with. The new, so then the new signs that are out there now, thank you, like I said, but they were out in September when we started the same lake and the Comus group. About, about the same day, that's when those new signs were put up. So it hasn't been a priority for the conservation board. I'm not saying that they don't do a terrific job doing what they're doing with the parks and the trails and everything, they do a fantastic job. But the, the dam has never been a priority, and I'm assuming it's never been a priority because the supervisors don't have the money and don't wanna try and raise taxes to do it. So we just decided that we wanna start fundraising to take that problem away from you guys. You know, when you have a riverfront development and then you say, well, we have to go talk to the conservation board, fine, we can go talk to the conservation board, but Sandy said, or not Sandy, uh, T C Loving said last week, she was ecstatic because then they don't have to deal with it anymore. So we wanted to come and explain this news so we could go to them on the eighteenth and say, this is what we'd like to do, would you just give us control of that or something? Because you people own it, you, you're in charge of it, you can change what the county conservation board does with that board. They don't have to be in charge of the dam per se, that could be taken off of their plate and could be put on our plate. That's because that's just one more step of things that we have to go through.
Oh, there's a lot of, the, the conservation board does have a lot of information, there's a lot more things that need to be brought to the table, so to speak, to be looked at, because we have to act on the best interest of the county as a whole. You know, you bring up some things, you have money, certainly, that's always been an, an object. I mean, there's some historical information that this was looked at some years ago, and long story short on that, it was probably a money thing, uh, when it really came right down to it. So there's some truth in all this, but we need the cold, hard facts as to what is the best interest of the county, what we can really do? What are we really responsible for and who's gonna ultimately be responsible for it?
Well, well, this all started when the conservation board wanted to sell the dam. You know, and we came to you guys and said, hey, we don't wanna own it, but we'd like to take over management, so I think it's that simple. But you relinquished their duties and, and assigned it to us. I talked to Scott Curran on insurance and he said, it's a supervisor's vote, if that's the way they choose to go, then he would submit a proposal to the insurance company to make us additionally insured, that could cover. That makes sense.
Now, the whole thing is Brett, you, right, you, you, you just hit the nail on the head. You don't wanna own it because you don't want the liability of it. So I don't see, if, if you wanna own it, own it and take on the liability. But I don't think your group wants to do that. See, and that's where everything comes together, it's all about money, it's about liability. I just had, I don't know how many people talked to me this weekend again and said, please reconsider, do not think about doing this because we know ultimately it's gonna raise our taxes. You might be able to raise all this money, but if you wanna raise this money, fine, raise it, donate it to the, um, conservation board to have things done. But I don't, honestly, I don't, I'm just saying this out and I'll, because I've had so many people talk to me this weekend saying, do not do that.
Why would we give the money to the conservation board when they just had an asset on the river, the Isaac Walton, they sold it and put the money in the campgrounds and didn't spend, put any of that money towards the dams that are in dire need of repair? So why would we give more money, cause we don't know where they're gonna allocate it?
It's gonna take more money than what they've got, more money than even what we got for ARPA to fix it the way you, you guys are talking about. It, it's, it's already been in all of the studies, so I don't know how, honestly, I, I'm not sure if I understand your facts.
I think what we're trying to get at here, the river development, Inc., is they're trying to look at the dam to figure out what needs. They cannot go on the dam and look at it because with, they don't have the conservation's permission. Therefore, they need the conservation's permission, so their meeting isn't for another couple of weeks, a week and a half. So when they go to the conservation board, then they will know what they can do. They'll get an agreement then to take care of, uh, the stuff, get the volunteer agreement signed. Then everything's covered, then they can find out what actually needs to be done. Basically, we, they've got it right here, but how do you control that? How do you look at it until they get down and look at the gates, which they can't get down to right now, then that's what they're looking at, right?
Reason.
Yeah, so.
But, but what, I'm, I'm just looking at the things you wanna do here, there to, to make it functional, but it doesn't help the integrity of the dam. And we've had multiple studies that tell us the dam is deficient.
And it's integrity. It's not a new.
No, it's, it's way past the life expectancy.
But it's not shot either.
Well.
I mean, we have to.
That, that is, that's, I, I mean, I like this idea, honestly do, but it doesn't repair the dam to keep it from failing.
Well, if you, if you read through.
And when, and when the dam fails, if there's anybody above it or below it, it is gonna be disastrous. And we know, we have three studies that tell us it's in bad shape. And that opens us up to huge liability by not fixing the intru- integrity of the dam.
If you read that accident report, it states that they can't pinpoint whether the heel.
You read that accident report, it states that they can't pinpoint whether the heel. Was ever put in place when it was built and in total it was pinned to the limestone. They can't, they can't move that one way or another. If that was done, they said there's a hundred years life left in the dam. But they're took that into consideration. So they said there's easily fifty years of life left in the dam, even, even not being able to prove either one of those things. So we still got fifty years life according to them. Yes, we have to fix some.
It needs to be addressed. It hasn't been addressed. There, there's been concretes falling and things like that on there for years. It, it wasn't done. It needs to be done, yes. Well, but we're gonna do that and that's what, and that's what we're trying to do.
And try, and part of it, if you talk.
We got fifty years, so that's a half life. I mean, that's better than vehicle you got on the.
And talking to Nate from the V and R with the rivers, you know, he thinks we're doing the right step in this phase. Because let's see what we can get for, move down there for sediment, get a channel started again. If we can't do that, then this is all moot because there's, you know, the drainage project would be so expensive, you know?
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want damage.
So that's, that's what you'll take care of. So Nate's like, why would you wanna?
Standard report says that's what they would do.
Yeah, why would you spend all that money?
Let it happen after.
But if you can't get some of the sediment moving, you know, and that's, that's from Nate.
Nate, what's his name?
Hoga, Hoga Boo. I can give you his number.
Okay.
We can call. He's a great guy to talk to. I wish you luck.
Well, some of this is fact, a lot of it's conjecture. And until we have, you know, everything. Definitive.
Well, we have.
Definitive from, you know, and the Conservation Board has done a terrific amount of work. They do have a lot of information. That needs to be incorporated into and with all of this.
And we have most of that over the last, I mean, we've got the standard report. Who says, you know, they can fix it. We've got the accident report that says they can fix it.
But we have to see, and Rick touched on that. If there is in the potentially a liability issue because those reports show, if there's something that needs to be fixed. Then we are not doing our due diligence to address the liability issue on the county side.
Right, that, that's what Rick says.
And then that is, you know, and you got, no one's arguing with that. Because that is a huge thing. So we can't pass over that with, with, uh, any of this other thought process.
Well.
And that's what John brought up several times last week. He is all about preserving and making sure that the county is not being liable for anything. He said that I don't know how many times last week. It's all about the liability.
Well, it always has been.
Always has been and somebody goes over right now and county's liable because they don't have a safety cable on it.
If, if everybody's worried about what was our liability and what was supposed to have been done, there's a quarter. That they were supposed to engage back twenty years ago. Nobody paid attention to that. So now we're worried about the liability. We've always known there and, and we don't know what we're doing and.
Twen- twenty years ago, none of us were even on the board then. So that's kind of a mute point also. And again, it was all about money.
We don't want to argue that point. We don't want to go back. Let's move forward with this. But we're doing, we're doing it with the reports that have been given to us. That's what we can work with.
I think the next step was to go to the Conservation Board, talk with them and get an agreement with them.
Bob Rasterson, can you see what time to say?
No, I'm just listening. I just got on. I was in a meeting, so I just got on.
Bob, can you get us on the agenda, the river development on the agenda for your next meeting?
I will talk to Todd about it and let you guys know.
Okay.
Well, to make it pretty simple. Have a dam up in Robben, that should come out anyway then, because it's dangerous. It is. I've been there for seven years, okay? That should come up immediately. Okay, you got the dam in Humboldt. If you think that's gonna blow out or something, it's not going. Now, to make it so it won't, we could put a road across the front of it, probably loads of brick racks. So that you can walk instead of me going out and helping you. You can walk all the way across there until the river gets up to nine foot. Nine foot, how many thousands you could feed this going over? It's, it's a couple thousand, you could feed thirty second. That's what you have to go by. And that all determines on rain. Now, just because it's dry, it doesn't mean it's gonna be dry next year.
No, I know.
You can't, if, if that water gets above that, they can't take that dam. They have to wait till the water gets down or you divert the river over where they diverted it when they built it. And people don't know that. That was, that was in the marsh around Spalding Park boat. You go down there right now, all of us, and we look at the gate. That, that gate is gonna blow out. Because I see it every day. There's a hole in the thing in the river where they come down on each other completely, rusting up. So, so however you, I would immediately, if you're talking about saying, immediately hire somebody to fix that gate.
Can somebody mute their, their computer? Well, it's them.
It's something on.
Somebody on Zoom.
Oh, that's okay.
Well, they're getting.
But okay, so, okay, now what are you gonna do right away?
We're gonna get the information.
Hey, this, this information is what you should be. It isn't about who, what they think or anything. They should understand this and be on the same page. So that has to be fixed immediately. And the cables should work. So I would hire, I would be, the first thing on agenda would be hiring somebody to fix that gate with that. Because in two years, if you tried, I'm all for taking them. But if that's two years away, and there probably won't be no money in two years, it might be ten years away. And I guarantee you, there's rebar on that footing that go into the linesville.
I'm sure it probably is, yeah.
Yeah. And then there's a footing and that's full of rebar and that dam is full of rebar. So if you're thinking about tearing it down, it has to be tore out completely because you can't get a two thousand pound jackhammer on that and jack it down. And then what do you do? Pour concrete across it again to cover up the rebar that's all gonna shell off and stick up. It's, it has to be the dangerous thing in the world right there, right? Am I kidding or am I wrong?
Well, I think you're right.
Okay.
The next step is to get us on the Conservation Board's agenda.
The first step should be to get on the page and get that big thing. And if you can hire somebody to do it right away, that should be done because of the water level. Right? I mean, the water's low right now. Yeah.
Right.
Next year, it's gonna flood, I guarantee it. It's gonna, it's not flood, but it's gonna be up to nine, ten foot or it could be up to fourteen foot. And it might stay that way all summer because last five years.
It's been dry.
No, two years of it. But the four years before that, it was high all summer long. And I know because I understand, I've been there, see what I mean? And we'll be mowing lawns three times a week. Two times.
What would be the chance of the Board of Supervisors and the County Conservation and us having one joint meeting and hashing this out? Because that would save a lot of steps and a lot of messing around is if everybody sat down in a large enough area. And we just all hashed this out because, because then everybody knows what everybody says and it's all on record. Because as it stands right now, I, I don't know, if, if they keep the minutes of the Conservation Board meeting, so, you know. If we might talk to them, would we, would, would it actually get that correctly?
They can, they always, yes.
They keep minutes.
Yes, they do.
But this was discussed last week, that once everything, everybody, the Conservation Board had their, got their legal advice. Got whatever it is that your group wants to get to them, to them and us, we talked about having a joint. All of that has to fall into place first, Joel, before we do anything further as far as a joint meeting.
There's their last meeting minutes, Conservation.
So.
That's what I was here for today, was to start that process.
Well, I think it just reiterated it because how that started, the Conservation Board certainly.
We went to you now, and then we're lined up to go to the supervisor, or.
There you go.
Conservation Board.
Yep.
We're doing just exactly.
I will tell you one thing. If a river development, he does the work, he could probably do it for thirty percent less than a public project.
Do you think that's why they're here?
Or fifty percent.
I think they're, that's the reason they want to try to do this.
I know, because it's, well, I know they do, public projects are expensive.
You know, and, but we want to get it done. And we think we can do that. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna take longer, there's no doubt about it. Well, I don't know. You can say it takes longer because there's been nothing done. Repair wise, lots of studies.
And I'd go back on what was said last week, then if, if the county is gonna require some type of. Sign off, a waiver, whatever, then hopefully the county is doing that, right? I would think we would.
Well, we would have to have something, yeah.
Yeah, but we would also put the stuff on paper.
I'm sure.
I'm sure that's guy up there.
I don't know if I'd have him do that.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Some, somebody who's.
Where along the line, yes. We have to have definitive proof that it's, any of this. And we have to also have definitive proof that where we stand, we, being the county, stand the liability.
Yeah.
As this moves forward. No, we have that. We can't lose anything.
About all we've looked at is this actual cost of the use is fifty to seventy-five thousand. Just to say.
I don't want conjecture.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's see if we can.
You guys are on the right track. With the Conservation Board, we, they do manage it. They have forever. Everybody can have their own opinions, but I think they've done an exceedingly good job based on the fact that they, as we should. Operate under the best interest of the county.
I'll go on record and say I don't believe that's a true statement. They might have been doing their due diligence, as you say, the last year or so, or two years, doing the. Putting the, the, the reports together, but other than that, they haven't done a whole lot managing it. The only thing that's showing up out there, Eric, is three signs. They showed up at, at the dam in Humboldt and they showed up at Robben mysteriously, new signs. Everything else was done by this group.
It's all, you know, perspective and I see that perspective, you know, I'm trying to look at this from as broad a picture as I can. But when you get right down to it, it operates under the better interest of the county at large, so. You know, I can understand where you guys are coming from, I really can. But, and like I said, you're going the right steps, but we can't, you know, the Conservation Board is a big part of this, so.
Our next step is to get a joint meeting with the Conservation.
Step is their meeting with you and then following on from there. So, yeah, like.
Is it possible for you guys to be there for one too?
I'll be there.
Oh, wait, wait, when it, when the third day and the other, and then come back to you guys and just get scrubbed out and we'd like to do something this. Fall or winter when the water's low, you know, if possible. I'm, I'm not saying we could, we got the, okay, I'm not sure we get somebody in there and die. You know, I don't know.
Sandy?
Pardon?
I said, I, I thought you were gonna say something.
Oh, not, it, again, we just gotta follow the process. I mean, I keep saying it. We've got to follow the process.
They're here. They're bringing.
Well, we don't have, they don't have, Bruce, that is so unfair of you to state that because we talked about it last week. John even said they need to get their own legal. And that we need to get all the steps followed. That's the only way we can do this and that's in good conscience, that's how we all have to do it. It's a process.
And that's what we're trying to do.
And that's what the papers here, right here, they brought it, it's here.
Part of it. It's not all the way through. They still haven't gotten anything to the Conservation Board. That could have been sent to Todd. Ahead of time, that could have been, it doesn't have to be presented at a meeting and I even said that last week. Get everything to us, get it to the board, let everybody have their legal go through it and let's move, then we can move forward.
Ten minutes after this meeting's over, this will be sitting on Todd's desk. I'll hand deliver it.
Good. But then there also needs to have greater detail in it. It can't just be an overview.
They can't get greater detail until they get permission to go on the dam and inspect it.
I think we've had enough, people look at the dam and there's been enough research there. And the group even that Brett had do it, sa- stated that there's things that needed to be done.
Yeah, and that's fine.
That's what we're asking, we're here asking if we can do those things. We're here to do that. You know, we have to do them in phases. You have to do phase one to see if it's even viable or makes any sense to do phase two and phase three. You know, if we can't create a channel and get some silt moving, we're wasting money trying to do phase two and phase three. Why do you want to go spend three, four million dollars right now if we don't, can't get the channel started and can't get some silt, you know? I don't know. And that's kind of what Nate from the V and R felt the same way. That was kind of his feelings as well.
Get us out of this revolving door for the time being. I'd say we're on the right track. Conservation Board meetings coming up, they are doing, they've done a lot of work. I think they're working on a concise. I like kind of, I do kind of like the bullet point thing, no matter what you're talking about. And hopefully they will be having that themselves. And this can be, uh, comparatively looked at and we've got to see where they shake out people like Sanders and it's a process. But, you know, we have, you know, I believe they've heard the same thing and are working on it as well, so when I see what they come up with.
Well, Bob, do you have anything to say here?
Well, you got a couple days. I, I, you know, a lot of this all comes down to money. And I was on the board when Jeannie was Director of the Board. And we were always told that the Boat Club was kind of taking care of the dam. Okay, I went out there several times when they're putting up those boards and I tell you what? We're lucky somebody didn't get killed.
Oh, for God's.
And, well, it's true, Bruce. I mean, I saw Gordy Kirkoff, we had life jackets sitting out there and I was recommended that. Everybody put on life jackets, but nobody did. Well, Gordy Kirkoff just about went over. It, it just, it all comes down to money. I think as a board, as, as a board, Conservation Board, we have done all that we could do. To that dam. I mean, we just don't have the money.
I understand.
A- a- and that's what it comes down to. And yes, I will talk to Todd and get you guys on the next meeting. Now, the Board of Supervisors is gonna be there also or.
I'd say that might be jumping the gun. Some of us will be.
Yeah, I'll probably be attending. I, I think it'd be good for us to be there.
I want, I, Brett, I want what's good for the community and for the county. You know that.
Absolutely.
I, I want to do the right thing, but we, we've, we've got to work together. We're just, everybody's bucking heads and it's getting. Tiring. I've been on the board for twenty some years. I've seen it all. And nobody can make a decision and it comes down to money. And you know, what's that?
And you know, you're exactly right. That's what it's always come back to. You know, I keep taking it to the next phase. It's about our quality of life in Humboldt, so people stay in town. And yes, it does cost money. So phase one, we're willing to put all the money up and we're. And we're getting some resistance, trying to even do it for free for the county.
Yeah, I get, I, I, I get that. And I think it's great. But then it all comes down to a liability. Say you guys quit working on it in five to ten years and. The county's stuck with the dam which not done. What do we do? We don't have the money to face it out. We can't do it, but I, I, I would just gotta figure a simple way out. And maybe I'm wrong by speaking like this, but. It's how I feel. We've got to work together on this as a team. It, it just, everybody is yelling and arguing with each other. I- i- it's just uncalled for.
Well, but, but it still comes back to nobody's, you know, just, let's just take the Murray Bridge, for example. There was money set aside until the right time came to fix the Murray Bridge so they had the down payment. Or what, what you would call it for that part of it. Nobody's accrued or set aside any money for maintenance or, or taking care of the dam. And we need to do, I mean, the county needs to start setting aside some money and it should have been, so.
It should, it should have been done, that should have been done years ago, Brett, probably. You're probably right. It shouldn't have been done years ago.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, you know, I, I get that. I, I just, it all falls down to money and that's just how I feel. I just.
So we're trying, we're trying to jumpstart it by paying for ourselves, raising money privately. So we're trying, we're trying to jumpstart it by paying for it ourselves, raising money privately. And showing the citizens that we want to save this asset, what we're trying to do.
Right. Well, we had that chance to do something, but that got pissed down our legs, so. I mean.
They're taking the lake out.
Yeah. On one asset, have to create another.
I get that. Well, let's just, let's get a meeting together and get things figured out calmly, please. We don't need to be, eh, eh, when one person speaks.
Let's move forward until, you know, we don't need to spend any more time there because we're about at the end of where we're gonna get.
Better work.
At least coming with bullet points, Bob. Let's let the conservation board, you know, get their stuff together for their upcoming meeting. I know you guys will be there, and I think we take it from there.
We'll do it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda. Except the resignation of Merlin Draft as the VA commissioner and appoint Dean E. Walt as VA commissioner. Merlin feels that he can't do the job because he's gone through the winter. He's gone six months out of the year, so. And Dean has agreed to take his place.
I'll make the motion if you need that.
I gotta, well, I'll second it, then I have a question. So Dean was what previously? He was a director.
He was a director now.
Years ago, used to be just three commissioners. Then years ago, they said you have to have a director, so then we hired a director. Okay, and that was Craig Malloy and.
Changed a couple times.
Okay, changed to. And he's retired from director. And as a commissioner, he does not draw hypers, so therefore he can, he can be a commissioner.
So there was there three commissioners?
There's three commissioners.
Commissioners and the director. Kurt Paper, myself, and Merlin are the, the commissioners right now. Okay, and then you do what the new director since Dean stepped down from that.
Right.
We, no, we need it. You have.
We have Wilson as a director. We hired him as a director.
And that's basically the, the job of the commissioners to make sure the thing is functioning properly.
That and then approve the payments of the bills and claims that come in.
Overseeing board.
Okay.
And the director works. As a director, takes the application, works on getting the veterans what they need and. And he gets together with you guys once a month. But Dean Fields, obviously, he agreed. He's, he's okay. He agreed.
And he would be a commissioner on it.
Alright with that. Okay, Dean certainly has a lot of background experience on this, bring a lot to the table, so, yeah, I did second that.
I did.
Bruce was first.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All very. Uh, test and place on file the recorder's, recorder's quarterly report. I think we have a copy of it.
Appears to be in order. Yep, I would say Diane's got this dated in. Make a motion that we accept and place on file the quarterly, ah, the recorder's. Yeah, recorder's quarterly report ending September thirtieth.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All very. Okay.
Did she need that again?
Do what?
Rick Peterson. We got these guys tagging right now.
It's like they're two times any.
Yeah.
You're used to the radio headset. Do you, do you want us to bring you one?
No, I'm just.
I'm giving you bad time.
Quite honestly, Bruce, you might need to play my way.
Okay, except place on file the sheriff's quarterly report ending September.
I, I thought Cory here earlier and I assumed that. They had anything to explain, somebody would have been here, so I'd make a motion to accept the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second that.
Looks like he paid out a little more than what he received in.
Yep. Well, this is great, yeah. And I had an overpay, refund over.
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All very. Many reports.
Okay, I'm going first. On Tuesday afternoon, we had a brief, uh, MAA executive committee meeting. Just to discuss a couple things real quick that went well. And then the balance of the week, um, Wednesday through Friday. I went to Cedar Falls and attended the Iowa roadside conference, which is also, uh, I, let's see. IDRM is integrated roadside vegetative management. That is discussed. I won't go into the boring details, although it was a very good conference. Uh, just one quick note, our county does not have currently an integrated roadside vegetative management plan.
Some counties actually have directors in that department even.
They do.
Have whole staff to manage their dishes.
They have roadside management staff.
Yeah.
And as I, and there's a, I mean, this is, there was a very well-attended conference, so you're talking to people from all over the state. And Rick is right, they do have actual, they're usually tied to secondary roads, but they're their own entity.
Yeah.
Roadside management. They do everything, you know, from spraying to mowing to planting. To tree removal, to a lot of stuff. We don't have our structure that way in Humboldt County, obviously, for many different reasons. But long story short, it, it's something I have been looking into. I'm going to continue to look into. I've talked with Ben. Off and on. Uh, I will certainly keep you updated as to the fact that if we can figure out a reasonable way to. Possibly implement an IRBM plan, we will. But if it isn't gonna be a feasibility thing. From some of, I've learned a lot these last couple, three years ago in this conference. Uh, we'll just have to stay tuned. But anyway, it was a very good conference, phenomenally good information. Like, well, Rick kind of mentioned, you know, you get to talk to people from all over the state. Every county does something a little differently in regards to the body and way they run their country, so. It's nice to get that perspective and I did learn a lot, so we're happy to be able to attend that. And, uh, like I said, I'll keep you posted if we knew forward or any, any kind of an IRBM plan. So that's all I had for the last week.
Nor did I.
I had nothing official either.
I had nothing official. Okay. Anything else come before the board?
What is this? I'm assuming just.
Who's in, up for election and some kind of ballots and.
Thank you.
So this is countywide?
Yeah.
I got a question. So there's part of, since, uh, schools, we have some of these. Yeah, because they, the district falls into Humboldt County?
Yeah, oh, yeah. School districts are part of Humboldt County, so.
Remember from that area? You know, different ones listed here.
Yeah, so if they're, you know, if you're in the Algona School District within Humboldt County, you voted in Humboldt County for the Algona School.
Really, and they get, they get their whole ballot that they'll vote for. Hmm, okay, interesting. They learn something new every day. No one's make sense, but.
So Leverne, officially, they're, they're, they're gone.
They're gone.
To Algona permanently, right? They aren't sharing. Next year.
No, I think they're done. Yeah, the school's been cleaned out.
Alright, well, that, maybe it was last year then.
Last year.
Yeah, they're out.
Okay.
Well, that, that explains the school board part of it, yeah. The rest of it, we don't think, for the mayors and the council people. Well, that's good to know.
Okay, anything else go before the board, right?
Nope, nothing on you.
Sure you want to know? I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine thirty. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We'll talk to you next week.